Hey, Tony.
All right. This meeting is being called to order. This meeting is being held in the council chambers, which are open for public attendance participation. We have an echo. 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 Let's wait until we get Josh. 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 Echo chamber. It sounds like the cliffs of insanity. All right, we're fixed. Okay. So anyway, the meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing and echoing, but not participation. At the link identified in the agenda, emailed comments sent and received by the city clerk at least 24 hours prior to tonight's meeting were distributed to city council prior to tonight. Can I have a roll call?
Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Vice Mayor Boomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Councilmember Kirchner.
Present.
Councilmember Pesquale.
Here.
All right. We will be looking at closed session first. Mr. Chaffin, will you read our closed session items for the night?
Thank you, Mayor Shaw. We have three items for closed session. First item is Item A, Confiscation of Legal Counsel pending litigation pursuant to Government Code, Section 5495, 6.91. The case is Kevin Soto versus City of Yuba City. At all, set our case number CVC S23-TRIPALOT2232, personal injuries from an auto accident. Item B is a claimant Stacy Julian, claim number 25-18, agency claimed against the City of Yuba City. And then Item C is a liability claim pursuant to Government Code, Section 911.4, the application to file a late claim. The claimant is Kimberly Marqua. The claim number is 2517. The agency claimed against is the City of Yuba City. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chaffin. Do we have any public comment on any item that's on our closed session? Do we have any public comment on any item that's on our closed session? Hearing none, we will move into closed session in the Sutter Room. All right. We will call this meeting back to order. This meeting is being held in the council chambers, which are open for public attendance participation. Meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing, but not participation at the link identified in the agenda. Emailed comments sent and received by the city clerk at least 24 hours prior to tonight's meeting were distributed to the city council prior to tonight's meeting. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Vice Mayor Boomgarden.
Present.
Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Councilmember Kirchner.
Here.
Councilmember Pesquale.
Here.
All right. Thank you all for coming in. It's a lot cooler in here. So we'll get outside here shortly. But if you will please stand, we are going to have the invocation tonight by Pastor Chris Fincham. He's a Yuba City Police Department chaplain and pastor of CityWalk Church here in Yuba City. And then the Pledge of Allegiance will be led tonight by our firefighter Chase Kennedy. Chris.
Let's pray. Dear Emily, Father, we pause today to acknowledge you, the one from whom all authority ultimately flows. Tonight is a special night for our city, Lord, and we pray for Jim and Josh as they step into their new roles as chief of police and fire chief. Lord, we ask that you would guide them with wisdom that is not merely human, but divine. Your word says, if any of you lack wisdom, let him ask of God, who gives generously to all without reproach, and it will be given. And so we ask boldly today, grant these men wisdom for every decision, courage in every crisis, and clarity in every moment of uncertainty. We pray for protection, not only for them, but for every officer, firefighter, and first responder they lead. May your hand guard their coming and going, their minds and bodies, their homes and family. And Lord, in a world so often marked by division and danger, help these leaders reflect justice, mercy, and humility. Let them lead in such a way that the light of truth, love, and grace shines, pointing us all toward the deeper hope that is found not just in good leadership, but in the one who leads us all perfectly. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you both. You may be seated. All right. Mr. Chaffin, do we have anything to report out of closed session this evening?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. We do have some items to report out of closed session. For Item A, with regards to the Soto case, authorization is already provided on that matter. But with regards to Item B, claimant, the city council authorized rejection of the claim. Item C, the city council rejected the application to file a late claim. There are no items, other items to report in closed session. Thank you.
All righty, thank you, sir. From the councils, are there any agenda modifications before we get started? Okay. Hearing none, we will move on to ceremonial proclamations. And the first one we're going to do tonight is this lovely group up to our left. And it's the Parks and Reclamation. And it's Parks and Recs Month. Would you please join us down front with the council? We have proclamation for you. Anyway, there we go. This is an incredibly great-looking group of people up here. And you guys do a lot for our city. And you guys get to do the fun stuff as far as what we get to enjoy when it comes to the parks and when it comes to all the rec facilities. And so before we even get to the proclamation, I want to say thank you on behalf of all of our city residents because you guys take such pride in the work that you do. You make all the experiences enjoyable. So can we just give them a round of applause to start this? And I'm not going to forget it this time, but I'm going to let the other council members say something if they would like to as well.
So, you know, it's pretty obvious, driving around our community and looking at our parks, that you folks take a lot of pride in your work. And when we have those winds that blow through town in the wintertime, in the fall time, and it usually happens at night, I'm usually thinking about you guys and what a tough job you do, but how well you do it. So thank you.
Thank you. I think one thing I would like to mention is our Parks and Recreation Group here, they are a regional group. They're not doing things just for Yuba City. They're doing things for our region. And by more than, more than by county even. Our senior center serves three or four different counties. Our parks are available to anybody, and certainly I think they're the best in the area. Our recreation programs welcome other area residents as well. So while we are certainly proud of them as Yuba City focused in one of our key quality-of-life departments, it's important to note their impact on our region as well. So thank all of you.
So before I got on council, I had no idea just how many areas in Yuba City needed maintenance, and that was your responsibility. So now I see that. I see you guys out there all the time. But I think it's an underappreciated, often underappreciated responsibility that you have. But I'll take this time to say thank you very much for what you do.
First of the year, we had a discussion about doing less with less. And you have stepped up, and you're probably not doing that. You're doing a lot more with less. And that bothers me. And I hope that we can get over that hump and it may make life a lot easier for all of you and make things even better for the community. So thank you.
All right. So with that, we'd like to recognize July is Parks and Recreation Month. And whereas Parks and Rec makes lives and communities better now and in the future, our Parks and Recreation Program are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our community, ensuring the health of all of the citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of the region. Recreation is a positive alternative for children and youth to reduce crime and mischief, especially during non-school hours. And I think you guys are getting ready for the summer camps, aren't you? Already started them, yep. Through the hard work and dedication of our Parks Maintenance Staff, our parks provide access to the tranquility of nature and the outdoors, as well as allowing residents across the outdoor spaces for childrens and adults to play and be active, improving the physical and mental well-being of our citizens, as well as adding value to the community's homes and neighborhoods. Residents of all ages and visitors to Yuba City benefit from the wide range of parks, trails, open space, facilities, and recreation programs, including Blackburn Tally Sports Complex, Gauche Aquatic Park, Feather River Parkway, Sam Brandon Pickleball Courts, which we know how important those are, tennis courts and bocce courts, and senior citizens, which is more important because they're right there, and youth and adult sports provided by the City of Yuba City. You guys do an awesome job at everything you guys do. The city council urges all the residents to recognize that Parks and Recreation enriches the lives of the residents and our visitors here. So therefore, now be it resolved that I, Dave Shaw, Mayor of the City of Yuba City, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim July 2025 as Parks and Recreation Month. And in doing so, ask that the citizens of Yuba City use and enjoy its parks, trails, open spaces, facilities, and recreational opportunities. Thank you, guys. And Ann, would you like to say a few words?
So, not really. I do want to say one thing because it's very important to me is unfortunately, everybody couldn't be here tonight. But I want to give a big thank you to all of the Parks and Recreation staff because they are a hard-working, amazing group of people. And I am very fortunate that I get to work with them every day and get to know them. And our programs and our parks show how passionate they are about their jobs and how much they care and just how amazing they really are. And I've seen some of our current rec supervisors come from recreation workers, teenage recreation workers, all the way up to recreation supervisors now. And it's just so neat to see. And I've seen park maintenance workers, ones come up to superintendents and threes and twos. So it's, I've got to see a lot over my years here, and I wouldn't trade any of them for anybody. They all work hard, and they do a great job.
Let's give them another round of applause. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Park in your spot, sorry. Oh. Sorry about you parking anytime. I got drunk, I'll park anywhere. All right. If you guys haven't noticed, we've got a lot of hustle and bustle going on around here tonight. And we are going to move our meeting temporarily from inside to outside as we install and swear in our new police chief and fire chief. And we ask you to go out and join us to be a part of that. And Mr. Bendorf, do you have any comments you'd like to make before we go outside? Are you saving them all for there?
Saving them all.
All right. Then we're not recessing. We're not doing anything else. We're just moving the meeting right out to the courtyard.
And for clarification purposes, one of the reasons we're doing that is to maintain our occupancy for fire marshal purposes, given the size of the crowd.
Good evening. If I could have everybody's attention, we're going to go ahead and start the next part of our program. So, is that good? All right. It's amazing to see this many people here at City Hall for such an incredible occasion tonight. It's the rarity that, you know, in the history of our city, that we get to install new chiefs of departments. But it's an extreme rarity that we get to open a new chapter in our city with two new chiefs at the same time. So if you haven't noticed, they turned, tonight's courtyard was all turned into this fabulous venue. So I want you to join me, and let's thank our team that put this together. That'd be Sierra Wakefield, Tony Derwazi, and Kristi Morales. Where are you at? Where are you at? Thank you, guys. So we're good. There we go. Better remember not to mash that button. So we're going to get straight into this. And we're going tonight with our new fire chief. And Chief Hubbard, if you would come on up and join us. And if your family would like to join you as well, because I know you've got multiple things going on, that would be great. And the one thing we like to do here in our community is we do things as a team. And so with that, I'm going to turn the microphone over to our newest council member, Ms. Toni Cole, and let her and Vice Mayor Boomgarden take it from there.
Thank you, Mayor Shaw. I first would love to thank our interim city manager, Robert Bendorf. He insisted on not just placing new interim chief for police and fire, but doing a permanent move. And the council agrees that we have way too much talent and dedication and just sheer trustworthy people, hardworking group, to look outside of our organization. So we're from within. And Josh Hubbard is the great candidate that was chosen. And it's always difficult to say goodbye to a beloved chief. But what we get to do is be, I get to be a part, and then please to be a part of welcoming new fire chief who embodies all of those qualities and more. I've only recently met Josh. It was just in passing. And I think our exchange was really quick. But what I did, I was able to tell him, you have had many of your firemen say very nice things about you. And the reception among them, I think it was unofficial, but it was kind of known that Josh was probably going to be chosen. And everything that his guys had to say was really nice. In fact, a few of them said there's no one else they would rather have been chosen. And the last couple of days, since I've gotten the privilege to get to see just how special this department is through many ride-alongs, our guys are extremely professional, just dedicated. It's a wonderful group. They've compiled a list of some of the qualities they find in Josh. And so I'm going to read just a few of them here for you. Josh is compassionate. He's a man of integrity. He's a man of faith. He's selfless. He wants to do what's best for citizens. His love for his job oozes out of him. He's proud to be a member of Yuba City Fire Department, yet humble in ways that he wants to promote others over himself. He's a family man. He builds relationships and has a good one with every single person at the department. He's passionate. He's dedicated. He's humorous. He's patriotic. And one of those philosophies are, are you on the job or are you into the job? And I think just hearing that is a testament to your wherewithal and heart and deserving nature of this title. With all the changes that you might see, Josh, over the years and the ones you've already seen and endured, I think that we are very much in good hands in this city with your leadership and also the culture that you've helped to develop at the Department of Yuba City Fire. So thank you so much and congratulations. I'll turn it over to Mark.
Hi, Mark Boomgarden. Currently serving as your vice mayor. My journey with Josh begins in 2006 when I was the fire chief here in Yuba City. And I can't tell you how much of an honor and a privilege it is to know that Josh came to us. And I had a small, a small piece of that. It was really Josh, in the interview process, who really distinguished himself as really a strong, up-and-coming firefighter. And he has proven that throughout his career in Yuba City. And he may not know it, but I followed him. I had sort of an idea that this guy's going to go someplace, and there he stands today. No disrespect to his father. It's kind of a proud father moment for me in some way because I feel like I and others who saw the professionalism, the sharp intellect, his caring for people when he came to us looking for a job that we selected him. And he has distinguished himself very well. One thing that I wanted to mention is, I know in my contacts with the firefighters, like as Councilwoman Cole mentioned, he's already known as a leader. He has a leadership position in the department now, but now he's stepping into that top leadership position. And what's nice, I'm sure for him, is he is humble. And I think that exudes his confidence. And I think that translates well into leadership in a fire department. One thing I did want to mention, and I checked this with Josh before Josh got hired, and I think he knows a little bit about this. A mutual friend of ours, by the name of, might get a little emotional here, so bear with me. Mutual friend of ours, Brian Zolner, who was a firefighter in Yuba City with me, when I came up through the ranks, called me on the phone and said, "Boomer." Stop seeing you, and I go, "That's great. Who's Josh Hubbard?" And he said, "Man, you're going to be impressed by this guy." And I go, "Brian, if that's coming from you, I'm sure I will be." And sure enough, when we got a chance to meet Josh, he impressed the heck out of me. Continues to impress the heck out of me. And I know if Brian, unfortunately, lost his life, lost his life, if he was here today, he'd be with us. So proud of you as well, just like I am. So with that, I'd like to go ahead and turn this over to Sierra. She's going to provide the oath of office. But please, if you don't mind, going with me and in honor of Josh Hubbard, who's now about to become our new Yuba City Fire Chief.
Please, get after me. I, Josh Hubbard.
I, Josh Hubbard.
Do solemnly swear affirm
Well, solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States
Support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies
Against all enemies.
foreign and domestic
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
So, bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States
Of the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California
Of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion
Purpose of evasion.
I will well and faithfully
I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
I think Camden is going to do the official honors here. So, pending Josh Hubbard this evening as his son candid.
This is just amazing right here. And to have your family here with you tonight. It's, Josh is going to do an amazing job, as Boomer said. And so with that, we've got another chief to install. So with that, Chief Runyon, will you and your wife Stacy be joined? Right here, it's just fine. And again, with that, I want to turn the microphone over to Councilmember Pesquale to say a few words, and Councilmember Kirchner.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for all coming tonight. I know it's a little inconvenient out in the weather, but the ladies did a beautiful job for us here tonight. I'm Michael Pesquale, District 3, council member. Two and a half years ago, when I came on council, we had a session, a scene where we were going to go, planning session. And the first thing that we stressed was a succession plan. It works. They know that it works. Having people from within will make us so much stronger, committed to our community. And I am so proud that these two young gentlemen took the chance and stood up and said yes. That is so important. Chief is, I know he's a very qualified peace officer. I know he's got all the accolades and all the ABCs, whatever committees and whatever that he's done over his career. But on a personal note, I've known this young man for 14 years now? 15? I was honored, my wife and I, to be part of this family. These two children, Connor and Haley, came to our priest will. And the one thing that I've learned is a good leader is somebody that takes real value and pride in their family. And I know from a personal experience from these two young people here, extending my right, that they are just that. And they will bring that type of quality of leadership to our city, which we need all the time. I know there's been a lot of speculation of why people are moving on and such, but we got the A-team back. And I'm very proud of that. And Jim, I know you will do an excellent job for our community and keep us safe. And with that, Mr. Kirchner, Councilmember Kirchner invites me.
Good evening, everyone. Wade Kirchner, District 4, City Council. Thank you so much for coming out this evening. Just the amount of people here is really testament of how this community feels about these two gentlemen up here. I would like to start by thanking Stacy and her family for supporting Jim. Because I know this is a big deal. This is, this is long nights, and it's a commitment. And when you're in law enforcement, you understand that. So thank you. And thank you for everything you do with Back to Badge, by the way. Thank you for that. When I was, when I first got the news about Jim's promotion, I think the community did as well. And it was interesting to hear the comments that I got in the public. And it was people that came up to me and looked me in the eye and said, "You know what? Good choice. Good choice. You guys did it right this time." And that's, that makes, that made me feel pretty good about the decision that the council and the city made on this, on with Jim. I would just like to say, without rambling on too long, thank you for your continued service and thank you for keeping our community safe. And with that, I'm going to bring up Tony Derwazi.
Captain. I, Jim Runyon, do solemnly swear
I, Jim Runyon, do solemnly swear
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California
Against all foreign and domestic
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic
That I will to the Constitution of the United States
To the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of California
The Constitution of the State of California
That I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely
Without any mental reservation
Without any mental reservation
Or purpose of evasion
Or purpose of evasion
And that I will well and faithfully
And that I well and faithfully
Discharge the duties
Will discharge the duties
Upon which I'm about to enter
Upon which I'm about to enter
So help me God
So help me God.
Jim's wife Stacy will be pending his death. Should I say Chief Runyon's wife?
Thank you very much. Again, Jim, thank you for stepping into this role and thank you for your family loaning you to us in this role for a little bit longer. So, we're looking forward to it. At this time, if I could have Chief come back up. Stacy, you can have a seat if you would like. And ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to introduce your new chief that's going to protect and care for our city. Let's give him a round of applause. Before I hand the mic over to our city manager, Robert Bendorf, to make some final comments. You know, you've heard from the council and you hear how much we believe in each of you. We have two men that, as I was stating earlier, have incredible integrity, incredible leadership, and care for their family. And that's not just their personal family, but the family that they are entrusted with, D.D. and F.D. And so, we are very blessed to have you here. And before I turn it over to him, I would like to see if you guys would like to make a couple of comments. Josh, would you like to say a few comments? As he pulls out the speech like the Oscars.
I gotta write stuff down, because I do feel some emotion tonight. So, I'm just some very basic things. I'm not gonna go on for a long time, hopefully. So, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Mr. Bendorf, I'm honored and privileged to stand here today wearing the patch You hear me now? Okay. Wearing the patch and the uniform of a Yuba City firefighter. Even though I'm pinned as the fire chief, my heart will always be as a firefighter. That's been a dream of mine since I was a kid. And to be able to fulfill this and just be a part of a wonderful city and organization, it's not lost on me the honor that I have at this moment. It's humbling. I never envisioned this for myself. I never thought I would have these opportunities. So, my promise to the council and to the city that I will serve with integrity and a character that's not gonna waver, that I'll be passionate and that I'm here to serve people first and foremost. That's the most important thing. Public safety. We're here for people, and that's what I will be able to offer to my white CFD brothers and sisters standing in the back. I've had a chance in the last week to kind of walk out into our administration building and I look at all the faces on the wall. So, making this decision, while it took a lot of time and thought and prayer, I saw the faces and I knew this department in the city's in really good hands. And I just want to be a part of it. I want to represent the group. This is a talented group and Yuba City's Fire Department is gonna go far into the future with my influence or without it, just based on the caliber of people that we have. So, to our group back there, I'll give my best to communicate, to not lose sight of who I am. I ask you to hold me accountable, to be true to myself and to you and represent you. I also want to recognize, we see a lot of our families and kids here. Our families bear the brunt of this wonderful profession. So, I want to acknowledge our families. I want to acknowledge the children. I ask you to come visit early and often, have meals, come share experiences, be in our firehouses, be a part of this. That's what I'm gonna want. I know our group will laugh about this. It's kind of how I always describe myself, but I'm a puzzle, made up of pieces of amazing people. I'm not an original. I've had great people professionally and personally that have invested in me. And that's the only reason why I'm able to be who I am today. I'll get emotional if I talk about everybody, so I'm not gonna do that. Try to speed this up a little bit. Chief Boongard talked about Brian Zolner. So, the funny thing is 19 years ago, I stood in that council chambers and swore an oath to just be a firefighter here. And my family knows this story, you know, because we talk about it. Brian was killed six months after I got hired here. He was one of the most well-respected fire chiefs in the state of California. He was known everywhere. So, to have the opportunity to meet him at 18 years old, have him invest in me, I'm only here because of that guy. I stole his material and I wrote his cocktails. I'm not prideful enough to make it sound like it was anything that I did. I followed a really strong name. So, my family knows this, but after I got hired here, he looked at me and he told me and my family, he said, "Someday he'll be the fire chief." And we all laughed at him. So, I think he's laughing today. And I'll do everything I can to be like him. He was passionate about people and the fire service, and that's right up my alley. I'm gonna keep his legacy going, chief. The last little bit, I just wanted briefly to talk about my family real quick, if I get a chance. And I'm just gonna mention names, because I will get emotional. But I'm a reflection of people. So, Mom, I'm a reflection of Earl Boyd and Shirley Coats. Yeah, I'm a reflection of Earl Purge, Donald Hubbard. I'm a reflection of my sisters Nicole and Ashley. Yuba City Fire would be far better off if I was more like my sisters. My older sister Nicole, faith, hope, and love. She demonstrates that every day. And my younger sister Ashley, humor, strength, resilience, never complains. In a room full of, or outside here with a bunch of firefighters and police officers, we don't stack up against my sisters, so I'll tell you that. To my parents, biggest gift and blessing has been to be your son, the sacrifice and love and prayer in which you've raised me. It doesn't take me long to figure out where I need to go. And where I need to go, I just look at my parents, because they'll lead me to Jesus. That's where I need to be. To Holly, to my wife, I want to point out that she was raised by a firefighter and then she married one. So, the poor girl, every second of her life has been at the expense of the fire service. And I said it before, it's a big burden. It's not always easy. And every second of your life, you've had to play second fill to do a job at times. We went on our first date, July 4th of 2003, and I knew I would love you every day since that moment. And then to be pinned by my son, 12 years old, you don't know if you saw, he's almost the big as me. He's a monster, won't stop growing. The people that know us, they know our story, but it was hard for us to be able to have a kid. And it never looked promising for a long time. Camden, you're the cry of our heart. And I'm so proud of the Hubbard name. That's how I was raised. Legacy and heritage, my Hubbard name. As soon as it's gonna be you, buddy, I'm gonna hand the reins over to you of this family. So, thank you. That's all I got to share.
You've had two or three minutes. Jim, would you like to come up and say a few words as well?
I will try to keep it brief, but I would like to say thank you again to Robert, city manager, and councilman mayor. I would not have taken on this role had I not known I had your full support going into it. That means a lot to me. You know, in people, my story is, I came here 20 years ago about, and it's kind of a leap of faith, so to speak. Was starting over in a new department, didn't know anybody. And what I figured out pretty soon is that I was willing to call this my home. And what drew me to the department, what I found I really liked about it was the people, was the how we got the job done, how we treat each other, how our organizations support each other. That's what kept me here all these years and maybe decided this all is a home. So, there's a lot of people, as I'm staring out in the audience, that I've worked with over the years, other agencies, friends. I can't list everyone, obviously. Alls I can say is you guys have all been part of the journey. It's helped me so much to get to where I am now. Looking forward to the future with our department. I want to make sure that all the people that come through our doors feel the same way about our own, as I do. Come to work, you want to be there, you want to do the job we do. And our job is to take care of you so you can go out, provide the best service we can to our community. Along those lines, again, support through the years. I see a lot of friends, too. You've been on that journey with me. Law enforcement's tough. As Chief Hubbard said, fire service, it's very similar. It's a tough job and it's your relationships in the building and outside the building that get you through it all. But I will name a few names. My parents are up here, Tom and Bonnie. I couldn't be here without them. Two sisters. My oldest one is not here, but I can't, Josh, Josh speaking on the I already talked about his sisters, so. I am the youngest sibling, so they helped me raise me, too, so they're partially responsible for the good and bad. But yeah, I couldn't have done it without you all, so thank you so much. And my father-in-law Dave and his girlfriend Donna, thank you for being here as well. Dave's been in my life a long time, 25 years. I've been with my wife Stacy when I met her in 2000. So, he's been another guiding father figure of my life, so thank you. Definitely not least, as I mentioned, 25 years I've been with my wife Stacy since before I started law enforcement. And it's been a ride. Job's stressful. It's a challenge, but it's fun. And I can tell you, you only get through it with it's all around. Well, she's been everything but that more. Can't ask for any better. Then these two teenagers. And son, like Dave, is already almost taller than me. Josh is 14. And he likes, he's got these great outfits. They, you know, like, besides the career, obviously, is a huge part of my life. Outside of that, it's chasing these two around and all their adventures and their sports, and that's what we love to do. Relationships with your family and people you work with, that's what so I'll state it at that. That's what I want to continue to push forward with our department, is keep that bond with people and relationships and make it a place that's where we spent a good part of our lives, so we need to make it most of what I want to be. Thank you.
You can simply hear from those comments that these two gentlemen were the right gentlemen for the job. With that, I want to introduce our city manager, Robert Bendorf. Robert, will you come up and say a few words, please?
Thanks again, everyone, for being here tonight. I'll be brief with my comments. I couldn't be more proud than to be here and watch Josh and Jim be one of the positions of chief. And both of you made my job really easy. So, I've only been here a few months, but your impact and your influence on me already made me a better person. But if I can have Jim leading his wife here, Josh, your wife, well. We all know that these two, and we'll get serious now, these two wouldn't be here without their wives. It all starts at home. And for them to be not only supportive of the difficult careers that both of these gentlemen have and will have into the future and what it's gonna take for their leadership, it is truly a seven-day-a-week, 24-hour-a-day job. And they couldn't do it without support of their wives, so we got a little something for you just to say, "Good job. We know that you're responsible for this and we know that you're responsible for this." So, to their families, congratulations. And Mr. Mayor, that is it for me. But thanks to both of you, really.
All right, don't trip on guys. For those of you that didn't join us in the nice, cool air inside to begin with, we are actually still in the middle of a council meeting. So, what I would ask is a little bit of grace before we go into a quick recess. If we could ask both our new chiefs to come up and let us take a picture real quick with the council, because we're gonna have to go reconvene, we would appreciate it. And with that, we will actually stand in recess for 10 minutes and we will reconvene the council meeting inside. Let's give another round of applause, motion.
We will call this meeting back to order. And we will move on to Agenda Item 3 this evening, Appearance of Interested Citizens. You are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on action. Items appearing on the consent calendar are business items on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on any other items within the scope of the city's jurisdiction, including items not on the agenda, will be considered at this time. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Members of the public submit written requests at least 24 hours prior to tonight's meeting will be limited to five minutes to comment per speaker. Repetitive comments may be limited. Large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinion of the group. I have one speaker card tonight. Mr. Phil Traynor, if you'd like to go to the microphone, you will have three minutes. And please remember, this is public comment tonight, sir.
As the council are aware, I was here last week, no, two weeks ago. I'm back again with the same questions. I presented the council with my opinion as to how we could repair our roads. I wonder if the council's done anything with my suggestion.
All right, Mr. Traynor, thank you for your comments. I did receive your email a few days ago. And you were here four weeks ago and then two weeks ago. And no one on the council has a record of any letter that you provided to any of us, nor did you speak last week and ask detailed questions. But for your email, I want to give you direction of how to help get those answers. Outside of tonight's meeting, please meet with Mr. Bendorf and the team, and they will be happy to address your questions. But outside of the meeting, okay, sir?
Okay, you remember last week or two weeks ago, you asked me to wait till after the meeting and then everybody absconded, right?
Okay. Again, Mr. Traynor, we're not gonna go back and forth. Two weeks ago, I said outside of the meeting, after the meeting, which meant later day. I'm doing the same thing now. You need to talk with our staff and our city manager. They will be more than happy to get you whatever those answers are. Okay?
Okay. So, I will I will address the public right now. I've been, and you people have been in the same boat. Our roads are in terrible shape. Nobody's done anything about it. Measure D went down. I don't think the council really expected it to go through. But I've done a little bit of legwork on this. And my opinion is that this is not very good English. But them that use the roads should have to pay for the roads. And I showed you how to do it. I'll give my three minutes back to anybody else that wants to talk. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Traynor. Does anyone else care to make a comment or a public comment? Anyone else like to make a comment under public comment? Tongue twat, it was hot out there. All right, hearing done, we are done with public comments. And we will move on to the next item on the agenda. I am going to ask the council if there's no objection. We have a request due to someone that wants to speak tonight. That, personal reasons, I don't want to go into, but could we move Item 14 up now and go ahead and have that and go ahead and have that to accommodate the speaker that came tonight? We good with that with the council? Okay, then with that, we will go out of order, and we will move to Agenda Item 14, which is the Code Enforcement Citation Fines. And Mr. Doug Libby, you have the floor, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Good to be with you for this item. So the purpose of this item tonight is to recover unpaid code enforcement citation fines by placing them on the secure tax roll in the same manner as the general taxes and directing that lien also be placed on the subject properties. Little background, your council updated our public nuisance ordinance back in 2020. Back in 2022, 23, the city established an administrative hearing officer to hear individual cases and provide administrative review on an as-needed basis. So code enforcement's goal first and foremost is to bring a property into compliance with our municipal code. And only when a case remains unresolved and progress is not being made. And what I mean by that is someone hasn't called code enforcement, then they get a notice and try to work out an abatement schedule. They're always willing to work out an abatement schedule with people. And when we're not making any progress, really, we're left with issuing citations. And it's really a mechanism to motivate a property owner to bring their property into compliance. Now, historically, the city hasn't collected unpaid fines because there really wasn't a process in place. We changed that last year. So we came forward to the council. We had 29 properties, 71 citations, and the council approved placing $35,600 of unpaid citation fines on the taxes. So this is now an annual process similar to the collection of unpaid utility bills. Collection helps offset a portion of the costs of our code enforcement program's general front impact. So tonight's item includes 19 different properties, 49 citations, and $45,900 of unpaid fines. Now, staff reviewed the costs and in some cases limited the total fines to be collected. We don't like the situations where we put too much fines on a property. It's just unlikely to be paid. So total costs proposed to be collected were capped to a maximum of approximately $5,000. So for each one of the cases that are in the proposed resolution before you, we created a slide. This is an example of one of them. So if somebody came and wanted to speak, we have the slide which contains the pertinent information, what the violation is, how many citations, notices that staff has had to be involved in to try to get abatement, and when it started and kind of what the status is. So public outreach, very important. So in addition to the citations, this year, we mailed invoices for the unpaid citations out to the property owners in January and March of this year. It's important because none of the affected property owners requested administrative review pursuant to Municipal Code Section 4-8.705. We did mail a 15-day notice of this city council meeting to those property owners in June 13th of last month. So our recommendation is to conduct a public hearing, adopt a resolution of the city council for the inclusion of unpaid citation fines on the secure tax roll in the same manner as the general taxes and directing that lien also be placed on the subject properties. Happy to answer any questions you may have. We do have our code enforcement team here should any detailed questions come up. So thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Libby. Is there any questions from the council?
Through the mayor.
Sir.
Mr. Libby, you say there's a 5,000 max. What were we looking at, some of those properties that you maxed out?
We stopped, I would say, at 5,000. So the way that it works is like your first citation will be $250. The second one will be 500, the third one could go up to 1,000. And then if we still don't see, they could pile on. But at some point, you start wondering.
Minishing returns?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So it's a very long process. It's just not, you get $5,000 real quick like it's.
No, I would suggest that the time put into code enforcement, when you look at how many notices and the requirements that we have to follow, there's way more time put into it than we're actually getting back.
Got you. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. That's all, Mayor.
All right, vice mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This might be directed to staff and/or our council. So it sounds to me like you had the opportunity or the ability to levy higher fines, but because we're trying to be reasonable, you stopped the fine at a level that you felt was something that could be handled.
Yes, that is correct.
So in essence, these could have been far higher, and we have done a little bit of goodwill.
Absolutely. There's some cases which have gone on for so long and remain unresolved. We think we could have easily gone to 20, $30,000. And it's just, when you put that on the taxes, we want to be reasonable.
Appreciate the answer. Thank you.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Doug, what's, as far as the fine schedule, is it comparable to other communities in the area?
Yes, absolutely. In fact, the citation amounts are actually dictated to us and under law.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? I'm sorry, you're not allowed at this point, okay? Is there any other questions from the council? All right, with that, then we will proceed with the public hearing. The public hearing on code enforcement citation fines is now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the council on this issue, please provide your statement via public comment and state your name and address for the record. Do we have any comments from the public? Now's the time you can go up there and speaks. If you would like to speak right after him, go right up there, and as soon as he's done, we'll take your comments. Yes, ma'am. Is your microphone on? There should be a red button. Okay, sir, please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Joseph Hagerty, and I'm currently at 1713 Wildflower Circle. And the yard was broken in. I'm one of these people that have one of these code enforcement issues, where it was a public nuisance, and yet someone broke in to my property to find this public nuisance. And then, and when I finally got here after medical issues back home, I found that there was a realtor involved, that the neighbors sold the house, and this was all somehow manipulated by realtors, which are and the code enforcement, from what I've seen, they only respond when realtors call. Other than that, they don't check to see if anything's been followed up on. I was just so discouraged and so tired after dealing with Trident Property Management and Summerfield Homeowners Association. And I had so many medical issues and things going on at home that I was just exhausted when I got this notice. They said you had six-foot weeds in your yard. I have 14 by 38 backyard that you could have weeds in. The fence was, the fence gate was screwed, bolted, shut, but yet it was wide open. And Eric Ball had images taken from the front gate. So someone broke into my property, and I assume it's a real estate or they had someone break into my property. And they wanted, apparently, they were unhappy with the condition of the fence. Now, I was in the process of replace, I replaced all the posts. The woman behind me, she let her tree die, it fell, took out the whole fence. You know, then this one has been for years. You know, repair, repair, repair. When I left, there wasn't a weed in the yard, not one thing green. Was have most of the posts replaced. And, you know, it just, it just seems like I helped the neighbors. I replaced their gates. I do all of these things. And then some real estate agent, you know, just calls up code enforcement, and bam, he's there. He was one time I was deciding whether I wanted the window in when I had the house resided. And is my time up?
Yes, sir. If you want to wrap it up in a couple of sentences, we'll be good.
I'm sort of unhappy that code enforcement ignores all these violations that are obvious. And yet, when a real estate agent calls or a homeowners association calls, he writes up my car because I have a white car parked under a messy tree. And it's completely legal, has tags, everything. But he writes it up, and I find it infuriating. And it's like, it's almost like it's a personal vendetta. And code enforcement is paid by the public. It's not paid by real estate agents. I don't know what kind of influence real estate agents have, but it's not right. Okay, I'm done.
Thank you. Ma'am, please step to the podium. State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Martha Maciel, and I'm calling. I came over because I have a rental. The address is Stino 6 Almond Street. I have a veteran living there, and he decided to do some self-wiring on one of the electrical box. I received a notice from code enforcement that they was not up to code, and I tried working with Mr. Boone from code enforcement. I tried getting someone to go out to do the repairs. It took a while, and I finally was able to get it repaired, but it did took several months. At the meantime, I became really ill, and I was not able to continue trying to get it fixed, get it inspected. But in the meantime, I got two citations. One of them is for $500, and the other ones is 1,000. I am retired. I get my social security, I get income off of my rentals. To put a new meter, it's going to cost me between 3,500 and 5,000 dollars. I will eventually put one on, but I really would like to see if they could take some consideration on the fines because that's $1,500 that I don't have. And that's the reason I came. I've never been here before, so I don't know what I need to do.
All righty, thank you.
You're welcome. Now, do I stay or?
No, your comments are noted, they're on the record, and then we'll go from here. You can come sit down if you'd like. So is there anyone else that would like to make comments during the public hearing? Anyone else that would like to make comments in the public hearing? Okay, hearing no further comments on this issue, I'm closing the public comment period, and I'm bringing it back to council. And so we need to further ask any questions of Mr. Libby and his team or take action. Is there any questions from the council? Mr. Libby, I do have just a quick question for point of clarification because you are recording the lien. And how is that collected for the public so they understand when and how that is collected?
So we will submit a package of information to the county's auditor controller's office the first week in August. And then the citations will appear on the first and second installment of the property taxes that they'll probably receive in early December.
So actually, it's broken apart as part of the property taxing.
It is.
So it's actually, they get one in December and one in April.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, that was my question. Is there any other questions from the council? All right, then what does the council want to do with this tonight?
Through the mayor.
Sir.
I just have a comment that we're adopting of how we're going to about, go about individual situations are individual situations. This is just the mechanism that we are going to use, am I not correct?
Mr. Libby?
Yes, this is the mechanism that we have in our toolbox to recoup costs.
All right, so we're taking action. Through the mayor, I move that we take code enforcement citation. B, adopt a resolution for the inclusion of unpaid code enforcement citation fines on secure tax roll in the same manner as the general taxes and directing that lien also be placed on subject properties.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries. So from this point, Mr. Libby, for our guest that spoke tonight, will you tell us what your next steps will be so that they they know what will happen from here?
Yeah, absolutely. The first week of August, we will submit a packet of information to the county's auditor controller's office. And then they will process it, and then you should see the, appear on the first installment of your property taxes. You will see a line item for code enforcement fines.
And through the mayor, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Libby, just because this is put on the tax roll for the benefit of the public, does that prevent additional citations if there's still a violation on the property?
No, it does not. So we would encourage any property owner to resolve the violation. I would also say that between now and the time in which we deliver the materials to the auditor controller's office, if you wish to satisfy the fines, that can be done, and then it will not appear on the on the taxes. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, we're going to go back and pick up the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar. Tonight, we will use the same voting mechanism that we used at the last meeting because we do have some recusals that need to occur. Mr. Chaffin, will you clarify us on those, please?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. We have recusals on Item Seven. Councilmember Pasquale and Vice Mayor Boomgarden both own property within the area and will be recusing themselves from that vote with regards to Number Eight. There will be one recusal in the form of Mayor Shaw for the same reason. Number Nine, Councilmember Pasquale for the same reason. Thank you.
Okay, so to be clear, as we vote on the consent calendar tonight, those recusals, even though we may vote in the positive, it's abstaining from those particular ones because we recused ourselves.
That is correct, and I'll double confirm the vote afterward if it's okay for you. That way, we have a very clear record of what happened.
Thank you. So with that, is there any public comment on the consent calendar? Any public comment on the consent calendar? Hearing done, I will bring it back to council for comments or action on the consent calendar. Items four through 12.
Through the mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I move to approve consent calendar items four through 12 as amended.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Cole, a second by Councilmember Kirchner to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Mr. Chaffin, what do you need to clarify at this point, sir?
Thank you. For Agenda Item Seven, the vote was three to zero with two recusals. Councilmember Pasquale and Vice Mayor Boomgarden. Number Eight, the vote was four to zero with one recusal, Mayor Shaw. Number Nine, the vote was four to zero with one recusal, Councilmember Pasquale. All other consent items were approved five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll move back to our regular business. We will go to Agenda Item 13, which is the portable road barriers. And Commander Slade, you have the floor, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Today, I'm here to present on the purchase of some portable road barriers. Some of the background is in 2023, we put in for a grant for portable road barriers, and we were awarded a $65,000 grant. The purpose is to enhance public safety during big events such as the Seek Parade, Christmas Stroll, Downtown Summer Stroll. There's a few other events that we can use. They're very portable, so they're very quick to set up. So obviously, the goal is to improve the perimeter security, restrict unauthorized access, including large vehicles, small vehicles, and obviously increased pedestrian safety. So we've identified the needs of the large events and risks of authorized access to pedestrian areas, much like you've all seen in the news where there's several events over the last few years where these vehicles have accessed parade areas like the Louisiana. So the portable barriers allow for rapid, effective event perimeter setups and flexibility for both planned and emergency responses. So the product that staff is recommending is to purchase the ARX Perimeter F-18 Barrier Trailer Kit, which includes 36 units. Its features are modular, heavy-duty, and rapid deployment. The benefits are they're easy transport, minimum staffing required, and meets the Homeland Security standards. With that, we raised, we received three bids from three different vendors, and these, although that's not the lowest bid, it is the one that it is the one that's more practical for the city, and it covers the most roadway. With this setup, it covers up to five lanes of travel, whereas the other two that we have got quotes from only covered roughly two lanes of travel. So the fiscal impact, the total project cost is $73,503. Of that, $65,000 is we're getting from Homeland Security. And the additional funding will come from the COPS grant, so there's no general fund impact. So the recommendations are to accept the Homeland Security grant, award the purchase of the 36-unit Road Barrier Trailer Kit, and then authorize the finance director to make the supplemental budget appropriations.
All right, thank you, sir. Is there any questions from the council tonight? Any questions from the council? Hearing none, is there any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, I move it back to the council for action.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve business item 13, A, B, and C, as presented by staff.
I have a motion by Councilmember Kirchner.
Second.
I have a second by Councilmember Pasquale. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you, Commander. We'll move to item 15, which is the Community Development Block Grant for 2529 Consolidated Plan and the 2025 Action Plan. And we have Shannon with us tonight. You have the floor.
The item I have for you guys tonight is one that comes around every year. Throwback to what Ben used to always say, it's that time of year again. In the Community Development Block Grant, this year a little bit different. It includes the 2025 to 2029 Consolidated Plan in addition to the 2025 Annual Action Plan. A little bit of background, so the city's an entitlement jurisdiction, just meaning we get an annual allotment of community development funds from HUD each year. The purpose of the CDBG program, provide decent housing, suitable living environment, and expand economic opportunities primarily towards low and moderate income people, persons. The three objectives here, each project that gets awarded has to meet one of these objectives. So benefit low, moderate income persons, aid in the prevention or elimination of slums or blight, or meet a need having a particular urgency. Generally, the items that we award don't use that objective. It's, I have this parentheses here because it's usually just emergency conditions. So those income limits, what qualifies as low mod income. The CDBG definitions are a little bit different than some of the others you might see. So low income is less than or equal to 50% of the AMI, area median income. And then moderate is less than or equal to 80%. I said 50. 50% low income, 80% moderate income. So the Sutter County AMI is the 93,000 number right there. I say I'd use the household of four, just like a general number for guys to get a good idea. So then with that, the 2025 income limits for low income household of four, they can make a max of $48,000 a year. For moderate income, $76,750. Couple of the reports that we're going to be talking about today. So the five-year consolidated plan, that's the one that doesn't obviously come around as much. So we only complete it every five years. The main point with this plan is it really identifies the communities' like priority needs. And then what, once we identify those, it is used to inform each following year's annual action plan. Obviously, other factors come into play. Who applies what, you know, how much money we get? All of those other factors come into play. But it does help inform the annual action plan each year. The one we're talking about today is for the 2526 fiscal year. So we did, we had a community need survey go out. Our consultants, our CDBG consultants did. And it identified these priority needs here. None of these are in any specific order. Majority of them have to do with housing. I'm sure you guys can guess. Homeless and supportive services, public improvements, public facility construction. And then there's always that economic development that we could improve on. So for the 2025 Annual Action Plan, the HUD funding that we'll receive is 585041. And there's a couple of regulations that come along with that money. A max of 20% can be used towards program admin. We don't usually take that much. You can see here, we are recommending taking $95,000 for that fiscal year. And then a maximum of 15% of the funding can be used towards public services. So it's a big one. Public services are generally the main applications we get. They qualify under public services, and it's the least amount of funding. So it always makes it a bit competitive. We're required to direct a minimum of 75% of those funds towards low mod income persons. And then the funding is to be spent within the fiscal year. A little bit of citizen participation here. I won't go through all of them. I don't know if you guys recall back in November, I had a presentation in council and the public just inform on the consolidated plan process. It's not something that happens all the time. We held a public meeting in December, mostly geared towards that consolidated plan. In January each year, pretty much, we have a public workshop, informs people of that funding that's available. And then we opened, we opened the application process. The 30-day public comment period started May 31st, ended today at 5:00 p.m. And then here we are today, holding the public hearing on the consolidated plan, annual action plan, and then an annual action plan amendment from the 2024 action plan. Touch on that a little bit later. So we received 11 applications that qualified. We're getting that 585 in funding. About $88,000 for public services, and we received over 1.5 million in funding requests. So here is how we are proposing to allocate the funding. As I mentioned, the $95,000 program income or program administration. We program income, so the second one up here, the owner occupied housing rehab, is a loan program that the city has. That funding that we're proposing comes from program income. That's why I misspoke earlier. So program income comes when we get repayment of existing loans. And that program income can only be used to go back into the program. It's a revolving loan fund. Kingwood Park Playground Replacement, the ADA Sidewalk and Facility. Casa de Esperanza, they last year had an ADA ramp project. And now they have a second in addition to their West Egress renovation. And then Freed always does the home repair and modifications primarily for seniors. Continued, these are the public services that are being awarded. We have the food bank and then Plazium. A couple of notes here. So I did mention that action plan needing, the 2024 action plan needing an amendment. That's due to a $27,000 funding request from that year. It was awarded for the food bank truck repair. And then HUD came back and said it doesn't qualify. So we have to reallocate that towards this year's funding. It requires an amendment just based off the HUD guidelines. So that's what's included in this presentation as well. Recommendations, so conduct a public hearing to receive comments on the 2025-2029 Consolidated Plan, 2025 Annual Action Plan, and 2024 Annual Action Plan Amendment. After consideration, adopt a resolution approving those documents and authorizing staff to submit the required documents to the Department of Housing and Urban Development for processing. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Shannon. Is there any questions from the council tonight? Any questions from the council? Okay, hearing none. We will open the public hearing regarding the Community Development Block Grant, 2025-2029 Consolidated Plan. And the 2025 Annual Action Plan is now open. If there are any members of the public who'd like to address the council on this issue, please provide your statement via public comment. State your name and address for the record. Do we have any comments in this public hearing on this item? Do we have any comments in this public hearing on this item? Any comments on this item? Hearing no comments, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for action.
All right, through the mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I move to, move to make the recommendation to approve A, B, and C of item 15.
Second.
Is there a C?
Can you go back one slide, Shannon?
Sorry, A and B. I got a feeling I made a mistake.
So we've conducted the public hearing, so you move to approve A or B?
Item A and B, yes.
A and B. You're good with that on the second? We're clear. All right. So I have a motion, and I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you, ma'am. All right, we're getting there. Item 16, future agenda items. Is there anything from the council they'd like to see brought back at a future meeting? Anything from the council? Okay, great. And let's move on to item 17, under Reports Communications. Spindorf, you have the floor.
Just want to say thanks to the council for their attention to our ceremonial pinning and appointments tonight. And just wanted to say thank you for all your support from all, for all five of the council members. Really appreciate it. That's it.
That's it. Thank you, sir. Then I'll bring it back to council reports. And I'll actually go in the order just presented. Councilmember Cole, we'll start with you tonight.
All right, thank you. So I will start with the meetings. I attended the Sutter County Children and Families Commission meeting. Lots of good things going on there. Their budget is in a very healthy place despite state and federal cuts. They've been conducting a lot of community activities. There's a baby shower that was well attended. The life jacket loner program. They're partnering with Hope Point Diaper, Hope Point Church for a diaper bank. And then there was a Live Oak Car Seat checkup recently. And I think just this week, a friend of mine, actually, her daughter won a statewide writing competition and was signing her books at the Yuba Sutter Library in Yuba City. And the book is called The Farm Dog, I believe. So she actually is getting national recognition for that, so pretty cool. And the second thing, I attended the Sutter Animal Services meeting just the other day. They're extremely short staffed, but still managing to get a lot done there, providing safe shelter for animals, deworming, spaying, neutering. They're getting a lot of animals this time of year and plan to next, or this weekend, actually, because of the fourth. So preparing for that. And the horse barn is finished over there. And then in addition to all of that, I've, after tomorrow, we'll have done 10 ride-alongs with fire. Just learning, really just trying to learn the rules and better understand the day-to-day because it's our decision-making, and I'd like to have more context. So it's been very helpful. And definitely, it's a family feel over there. I don't think I really solidified that feeling, but they're a team and very strong in their camaraderie. So it's just, we have a wonderful fire department. And went on a ride along with Blake Baca this, earlier this week with police. And he's doing a great job. Those police are stretched thin, but working really, really hard, as is code enforcement. So I'm going to be talking with Libby tomorrow, actually, about some of the ideas that we tossed around with how to better help code enforcement. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Kirchner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank staff for all their hard work at the, pulling off that event out there earlier. That was just world-class, great job. Kind of a, kind of a slope last couple of weeks. We did have a Yuba Sutter Transit meeting. And one of the things that came, one of the big takeaways from this meeting was in the last month or two, with all the, I guess, uncertainty in our nation's capital, locally, we've seen some big projects simply go away. One of which being through, in the Seboufka area, was a $30 to $40 million project. The other one was with, out there at Calpine, $270 million that that project just simply went away. Transit is in, getting caught up into this, and we're looking at the possibility of what these grants could potentially mean to them. It's the first time that I've been on that board where the, the possibility of, just, just the possibility of electric buses not happening. And so that, that was actually brought up and kind of a what-if. And so stay tuned, because it's, it's an interesting time we live in. I would like to point out that we do have a Fourth of July parade coming up, which I think everyone should attend, at 10:00 a.m., Pluma Street. And we're going to have a really cool fire truck, right? That I saw on the news. And I look forward to that. And lastly, it was brought up tonight, something about the condition of the roads in Yuba City. And prior to the meeting, I was having a conversation with my fellow councilman, Mr. Pasquale over here. And then he brought up that there's all this construction work currently happening in a road, on the roads, in a community called Chico, which is just north of here. And I looked it up, and interestingly enough, they had a revenue measure pass two years ago. And I'm wondering if one item has anything to do with the second one. So with that, I conclude my report.
Councilmember Pasquale.
Thank you, Mayor. Participated in the SASSA meeting with Councilmember Cole. We went over budget, was the main topic that we had, and everything looks fine. I did have a question about what would possibly blow it off kilter. And I was told that pharmaceuticals are an unknown because at any given time, they don't know how many animals they will be inoculating or doing surgeries or the such. So that was kind of, I just wanted to make sure that they were aware that, you know, there are always pitfalls with every budget. The barn will have a ceremony, we were told. They're just waiting on a plaque, I believe. A plaque. And that, that was basically developed by the friends of the, of the pound or SASSA or whatever. So the community is really involved in this, and it's going to make a huge difference with their capabilities of securing and helping animals that are not in really good situations. Went to the fair reception. That's always interesting. A lot of, a lot of young people in our community are nationally recognized for their efforts in agriculture and horticulture, animal husbandry, and all of the such. I was very impressed. I mean, national rankings in our small community, which I found very, very refreshing. And I will say that out of the 10 or 12 that were up there, my wife had something to do with their early education, at least four of them. And I was always proud of that to see. Also, Fourth of July parade. If you haven't gone, go, bring your bike, ride with the kids. It's a hoot. I always ride my bike with them. And it's, it's challenging, but it's fun. So with that, I conclude my report.
Thank you, sir. Nice, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Echo the comments in regards to the Fourth of July parade. One of the, one of the, probably the neatest little parades this side of the Feather River, for sure. Anyway, no shade, Marysville. But first, I'd like to acknowledge the production that was put on out there and the comments made by the council, and especially the speeches made by our two incoming chiefs. You know, and I would like to, to acknowledge the comments that Councilmember Pasquale mentioned in regards to, some of the comments that have been made in regards to the departures. Departures are always tough. And we did lose some folks who take some good memory out. But the commitment that was made by, by this city, and it even predates all of us on the council and succession planning, has prepared some folks to ascend into those roles. There are more to come as we fill some other slots as well. But I would also like to acknowledge the fact that, you know, that kind of stuff works. And when you invest in people, then when you do have those departures, then you do have folks that are ready, willing, and able to ascend into positions and establish leadership roles. And what's really meaningful to me is to note that the folks that, that we have selected, and I'll go out on a limb and say, hey, leather's coming. The folks that they will lead want to be led by those folks, you know? And that is encouraging as heck. And more, more on that as time goes on. But I think we have some good things coming. And I acknowledge, want to acknowledge all those who are serving in interim positions right now. Two of them have now been formalized. And our city manager during this time. This is a, you know, this isn't necessarily the easiest time with budgets and state and federal and geopolitical stuffs to be operating a local government. And I think we're, besides the COVID, this is probably one of the more challenging times that we're all going through. And guess what? The services are being delivered. The services are being delivered, and we can always complain about this or that. There's always going to be that, at least in the, in the 30 years I was in local government, and the 44 years that I've been, or 45 years now that I've been in this community. So can always find something to, better pick my words here, complain about. But at the same time, you have a hell of a lot of folks out there that are working with the city of Yuba City with the city logo on them that are working their tails off trying to provide service. I did want to follow up on something that Councilmember Kirchner mentioned to us, because this one's beginning to, to cause me a little concern, and I know the mayor shares this with me as well, and that is, we have a challenge coming forth to the city with the Seek Parade. The Transit Authority made a tough decision based on some legal stuff that's going on, some liability stuff, that they're not going to be able to provide transportation for our Seek, Seek Event in November. To date, I'm not aware of any contingency plans made by our folks over at the temple, though I think the city of Yuba City and the Transit Authority stand, stand ready to try to assist in any way that we can. But without that important component in moving people around the, you know, the thousands and thousands and thousands of people, I've become increasingly concerned about safety. So hopefully, we can get that meeting with the temple leadership soon. Did I mention code enforcement already? Okay. You know, code enforcement is a tough, tough job. I wish they were here. I have, I've, you know, I've, I've received the complaints from citizens, and, sir, I would, I would say that our code enforcement folks are pretty much complaint-driven because they're, because of the volume of code enforcement issues that exist within our community. So whether it's a real estate agent, a neighbor, a police officer, the code enforcements themselves, citizens, that is how they operate. So at this particular point in time, you know, they're not out on patrol singling anybody out. They're, they're responding to, they're responding to complaints and trying to mitigate those complaints or deal with those complaints, not in a punitive way, but at the same time trying to get compliance. And I, I just want to take a moment to acknowledge them. I know there's been some, some, you know, significant efforts made, especially in the, in the area of cleaning up camps. We've seen some pictures, we've seen some weed abatement, things going on. We don't often give them the acknowledgement and the, and the recognition that, that they deserve as well. And I think that I appreciate seeing the fruits of their labor, if you will. And I acknowledge Mr. Libby for trying to migrate through, you know, the whole fine process and trying to be fair. I appreciate that. I would like to publicly acknowledge Sheriff Barnes, our own Sutter County Sheriff for being selected, the president of the California State Sheriffs Association. It's a pretty high honor for, you know, this, there's 58 counties, if I'm counting them right, Mr. Bindorf, if I'm not right, I think. And you know what? Our very own county sheriff is president of all the sheriffs in, in California, pretty neat. And I would like to, with indulgence of the count, the council, close the meeting tonight in memory of Bill Grove. He was an undersheriff in Sutter County. He's a super, super good guy, but super professional law enforcement person for the county who obviously served both the county and the city. So, Mr. Mayor, if you would indulge me with that at the closing of the meeting, I would appreciate it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and absolutely, we absolutely will. There's been so much going on in the last two weeks. Someone just hit the significant ones, because I think we've all been at a lot of them with the fairs and the, you mentioned the, the diaper bank, which is huge coming up and various things. RWMA, we had our meeting last week, closed the budget for the year. The significant thing that's coming from the RWMA, as it is a JPA, is the funding for 1383. And so in October, there will be an increase of approximately, I believe it was 96 cents a month for residents, which is a 1383 fee for food recovery. And the food bank does play a large role in that, with recovery of food from Costco's and Bel Air's and Winco's and everything else, and trying to get that turned around and back out before it's, is wasted and getting that to where it doesn't end up in the landfills. So that is the most significant thing that's coming is, is the rate increase in October. With that, it's just been, it's been a lot of meetings here with Mr. Bindorf and our city team. I'll start with you, sir. Thank you for your leadership during this time. I really do appreciate that you don't see this as just a temporary time in the seat, but you are really putting forth your best effort to help us guide the city with our, our team, which is our, our 300-plus employees. It's not just five of us and you. It is everyone that works for the city. So thank you. Thank you to all of our E-team, our department heads, everyone. I have seen nothing but dedication and commitment as everybody keeps stepping up to the plate. Tonight was just a taste of what's to come. I will go out a little bit further, and I will, I will say that in the coming weeks, you're going to find out that the future of the city is actually brighter than I think what some people give us credit for, their vice mayor. And we're going to continue to move this, this city forward even through these tough times. So on behalf of all of us, I want to just say thank you, because we do have a hell of a team that puts together their best effort, and they care deeply about the city. So we've got the parade coming up. Everybody have a wonderful Fourth of July. It's, Vice Mayor, you started this thing. It's Center Street on Plumas, correct?
Yes.
10:00 AM on the Fourth of July, so be there by 9:30, because the parade will start at 10:00.
Hot dogs, drinks.
There you go.
And popsicles, I think, this year.
Okay. Everything's free. The orchestra usually plays at the town center. There's hot dogs, there's drinks, popsicles. Years past, they've had cookies. I don't know what all is going to be there, but it's great. And this is all put on, and talk about the heritage, I'm going to call you chief for a minute. Our former chief right here started it back when he was over the fire department, and it's a way that those men and women give back to our community, and they spearhead this. And talk about a little bit of Americana. We don't need to go to the Midwest, we just need to stay away from some of the big cities in California. I won't name any names, Sacramento, but we'll stay here in Yuba City, and we will get it done and get it done right, and have a little bit of our own Americana here. So with that, is there anything else that anybody has tonight? All right, make sure I get this correct. We will close tonight in memory of former Sutter County undersheriff Bill Grove, and we stand adjourned.